Yeah. No, I'm not going to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So our city has a focus business.
Yeah, it's probably.
And you've been doing that.
I don't remember.
On a regular basis anymore, right? I think it's part of the.
Well, yeah. That's what I have to do.
Yes, that's right.
I didn't think this would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Generation zero or something. This person's work. This, this point was.
He's here every day.
One inch square looks like surround.
Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
What's going on down at your house? You got people living in front of you now? No, they just fixed it all up. Oh, they, oh, they don't live there?
I'm looking at her. Yeah. The lawyers. Yeah. Yeah. Well, they put a new book on there. They were. We're so proud of these guys. You don't want to buy this.
Our council ladies Tuesday, June nineteenth. The order please stand for flag. By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice. One, two, three. My note that all council members are here tonight and John White, Denise Beeston. Denise is filling in for Laura Kelly, who is on training. And President Casey. So before we go further, we have a new council person. Might welcome her aboard and time for the oath of office. Would you please step up where everyone can see you?
The podium's taller than I am.
Well, you can stand outside. You can stand to the side. For those who don't know, this is Elizabeth Lozella. She, the county appointed her to be our other council person. And so she gets to take the oath of office and sign in tonight. So I can read it and you can say it after me, or you can read it directly, however you want to do.
I can read it directly.
Do you read it directly?
Yeah. You mean raise my hand?
Raise your hand.
Raise my hand. I, Elizabeth Lozella, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and the ordinance of the City of Goldfarb, and that I will impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of the City of Goldfarb, Council position number one, for a two-year, unexpired term, according to law, to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, I'll just move over here.
Yeah, I got to take this one out away.
Okay, there we go. This is yours?
Thank you.
Okay, now that Elizabeth is here, so you can vote on it, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for Tuesday, June nineteenth.
Okay. Any discussion about what's on there, the additions, or anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me, Joe, I screwed up.
Okay.
I noticed that from the last week, we had a wall's for states bond. And then we were going to get some more information for our next meeting. Is that going to be the next next meeting?
I guess so, because there was no more information coming. We got, it went solid on their end.
Okay.
Okay, I wanted to be good. Okay, as far as the mayor's report, the, we see. And there is going to be. There we go. The. There's going to be a world, there's that World Harmony Run going on. And these are a bunch of people who run for miles all over the world and just for, hey, let's get together and like each other and work in harmony. They will be coming through Goldfarb Monday, June twenty-fifth at one ten P M. And so anybody who wants to stand by U S two and cheer them on is welcome. And here's their route to the United States, so they'll be coming from the Seattle direction. And that's a long run. I suppose they run it for a while to get out, but I don't know. But anyway, they'll probably stop and chat. It should be an interesting group of people. Now, I would have them there taking pictures. So that's the mayor's report for tonight. So we'll start with the council staff reports. There we go. Thank you. Denise, you can report.
John? Few things. We've been working on the Shoreline Master Plan Update. We've had a grant by Department of Ecology, and that expires the thirtieth of this month. But we're asking for an extension. Plan probably won't be available this year. And so we've been working with Department of Ecology to extend that grant. Looks pretty good. As far as closing out the water tank at Goosebumps Station, we're still in that process. We've just received a lien releases now from the state agencies, so that's a progress. The sidewalk bid opening for Highway Two Sidewalk is the twenty-sixth of this month at two P M. here. Hopefully, the bids come in and they're within reason and we'll be able to get through sidewalk. Work started. And then I was notified by Department of Health this month. At the end of this month, we're not sure what date. They'll be coming, looking at the water system, doing what the Department of Sanitary Survey. They do that every five years. You go through your system, write down those things that need to be taken care of. I'll put the council on all that books and write a report on all sorts. And I would now be just busy with that, working on the signs. Jay will be here probably Friday and we'll be doing some cutting and that sort of stuff on the folks. So that's back in the process. This busy time of year, we got the Consumer Confidence Report out through the water system to all the citizens and sent required information to the Department of Health on that list. That's it.
The water tank got punch walk. Remember, we had an issue with, they wanted more money to perform punch walk, or punch items. We were going to look into that. So I'm assuming that all got ironed out and we're not making any more checks?
Punch walk.
Punch walk. Punch items.
Punch this type?
Yeah, punch this.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
Done, okay.
The project's done.
Okay, thank you. President Casey?
Been busy. Deputy Cook and Hager are still both on leave. Deputy Cook's expected to return in the next couple of weeks. I've had Ron Dersch, who was a prosecutor here for twenty-eight years, and decided to come and talk on our side of the fence. He's been filling in for Deputy Cook. And to get stuff put around Robin, I've got Tom Ditto assigned to start Sunday to fill in for Deputy Hager. So we'll have some stability that way. This weekend was busy. Had a thirty-year-old man who was arrested earlier in the week, decided to return and makes threats to kill people and got himself arrested again. We had a suspicious fire at eight oh three Orchard. House burned down. The Fire Marshal's investigating that as a possible arson. And we had another assault, eighteen-year-old man and another gentleman engaged in a fight. And the eighteen-year-old was stabbed. He survives and he is being charged forward against him for felony assault. So again, the one that got stabbed is, we're asking to be charged with a crime, so it can fill in the gaps, I guess. And that was just this weekend. It's just summer's upon us.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with council. I would say you go last, okay? Because you have the most confidence, I guess. Bob, your comments?
Yeah, welcome to our new council person. Thank you. I don't feel I've punched it in, we're happy.
Ted?
Ted? I'll keep my comments for later.
Thank you. Hey.
Welcome. Glad to have you aboard. Thank you. You like Elizabeth, Liz, Lizzy?
Yeah, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, okay. Not be that strict. All righty, welcome. And I don't have anything else. Well, I suppose, except when I'm looking forward to Goldust days.
Yeah.
Yeah, so welcome, Elizabeth. It's good to have you in the whole council. And, I don't know, so I would like to have something to say that's upbeat, so my wife was showing me in the paper tonight that Monroe is considering an ice rink. And we always are looking for new business and that's, you know, that's something. If we had some, I think along the lines for Goldfarb, something along the lines of a little water park or maybe some kind of entertainment that would attract people as they come and go by here. Anyway, so that's just a side note, but I guess as far as council business is concerned, the only item which, which I wish to address or make comment to is, is the fact that our legal services budget for attorney litigation is, is over budget by three hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents as of tonight. So I'd like to make you counsel aware of that. And that's it.
All right, Elizabeth, fill us in.
I'm not.
I'm Elizabeth.
I'm Elizabeth.
And how you're happy to be here?
I am very happy to be here.
Okay, well, what do I know?
I threw my hat in the rain. Have no idea what I'm doing, but I'm willing to learn. I'm open for anybody who wants to talk to me at any time. I'm going through radiation therapy, so I'm not home here, see, during the day. So I'm usually home in the late afternoon. I live in Berlin and you'll see me around. My other half runs the hot dog stand called Iffy Dog's Hot Dog, which is going to be at Goldust Days. So he's the other half. He's the other part of me. And it's been a rough year for me, but I'm doing well and I'm planning on keep on playing along here. And I'm going to do well in the council and learn. And I'm going to try to see what citizens have to say, so maybe I could have some new, fresh insight and input, come up with some solutions. I'm a one to save money. I can go to the grocery store and spend a thousand dollars on groceries, which I did the other day, and ended up only paying five hundred because I used coupons. So I save money.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, any citizen comments? You remember to, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Bobby.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go up there and talk loud so the lady can hear you.
I'm sure all of you know I own driveway auto on Highway two. And to address the sidewalk issue, after doing some more research and talking to the other landowner that owns the property to the right of me, the whole problem that we've had is, is losing the other access to the house. Well, technically, he owns ninety percent of my driveway. So if for some reason he decided to not let us have access to that driveway, then we'd be completely shut out if we lost both accesses. So that's, I don't know if the city looked into that, or they were out, the gentleman that owns the property, because there's somewhat of a dispute between property lines at the end of the property, and he said that he's going to have it surveyed. So, but if you Google it or anything like that, MapQuest, it'll show that our driveway is actually partitioned to his property.
Yeah, so if I could address that to some degree, I, I own a hundred percent of my neighbor's driveway. But it's on an ingress, egress right of way. I have to give him right of way. He should, you should have, you should have a right of way for ingress and egress across his property, and that should be filed either with the city or with the county. I don't know whether the city holds those, those right of ways, but the county would for sure. That should be filed so that he can't take it.
Well, like I said, I, I don't know that much about property and all that, so I'm learning as I go. But that's one of my major concerns, and the other concern is I have three children and they all go to Sultan School. And the school bus as it is now pulls off in that front driveway and picks up the kids. Now them trying to get into the other driveway, basically, I'm just, I'm concerned because it would stop the bus on Highway two. And then also having my father go back out towards Highway two to retrieve his mail instead of it being where it's at, it, it concerns me a lot because my dad has a very bad tendency to tip his wheelchair over. And.
As far as mailbox goes, it should stay in the same place. When we increase the driveway to forty-five feet, that means the mailbird can drive in, drop off the mail at the end of the driveway pretty much where it's now, and drive out without backing. So that, that should not, the mailbox should stay pretty much where it is, maybe move a little bit west.
Yeah, but I have to, because we're losing that part there, I have to move everything back. So right now, we're having a new wheelchair ramp being built in the back for my father to have access there. And then I'm going to take out that whole ramp, just so I have that much more room because the cars will be parked there.
Nineteen feet or something between the house and where the sidewalks could be, if I remember right.
Yeah.
And that's going to be, you know, plenty of room for him to drive the wheelchair. I mean.
Well, no, it's, it's when there's other vehicles there, and then especially, you know, we do a lot of R V. work and heavy equipment stuff. It's, it's pretty difficult to get in and out of there, even as it is.
Okay.
You know, but, and then my other question was, right now, we're doing work on the city's truck and going in there and checking stuff out. Everything is, is all original.
On the city truck?
Yeah. It's, never had, it's, it's the original timing belt. It's a nineteen ninety-six truck. So it's the, the maintenance on it is, is something that needs to be taken care of, you know, and as, as tight as times are, you want to do as, as much to the older trucks and keep them, and keep them up and going as you possibly can, instead of spending the money to buy a new truck. So.
Yeah, that's going to be part and parcel of a later discussion, I do believe.
Oh, oh, okay. I didn't.
And that's really something, take up with John. Let him know what maintenance field is needed.
Okay.
And, and then he's the one that has to go grab the money somewhere.
Okay, well, I, like I said, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, we, we are understanding that.
And that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to help.
Okay.
So, all right, I'll knock them.
Ray Coleman, two oh three nineteenth Street. Two items. One, I see they're going to have a blood drive or mobile blood bank thing out here at Station fifty-four on Friday and next week. I think that's the twenty-ninth from about ten to four and with a lunch hour off. So see you all out there. The other thing is, the sheriff's office and all of the contract cities has gone with a new crime mapping, and it's crimemapping.com. I poured it out on my block watch, and it should be pretty well self-explanatory for most of you. They say that they up, they acquired the data shortly after midnight each day and uploaded by about five forty-five A M. Monday morning, I went and couldn't find Friday, Saturday, and Sunday up through eight or nine o'clock when I left and came back in the afternoon and it was there. So I continue to check on it. It, it is a very interesting one. It's got all, a lot of different crime types. They don't talk about dispositions, they're all in there. The crime mapping that I do, I think I will continue, will modify it, mine a little bit so that I'm only doing certain things, but I do it for more agencies too than just that. All the contract cities are in there, Goldfarb, Index, Sultan, Snohomish, Stanwood. And if you want to look at Marysville and Lake Stevens here out of luck, but you can see all the county stuff there. So if anybody wants to know more about it, let me know.
Step up there and name an address.
Tamara Baker, and I live at three two one, first off on Prairie Movement, from the Island First Street. I have two questions. One was about owner, where incidents happening? Do you have written report so you could show us where those incidents take place in the city or you don't just?
What I can give out here is fairly limited, and so I can give basic information about what happened and how.
But you don't talk about the areas of the city?
Yeah, I wouldn't give a necessarily a specific address. Reports that I gave tonight, two of the three certainly occurred on the east end of town. One close to the grocer, the arson, when he dragged through to see where the house burned.
Yeah.
And I believe it was our second street. The harassment case occurred further east. So I don't think anything occurred on this end. I'm not positive on the assault yet, I just received that information.
Okay, thank you. My second reason for coming in, I only attended one other city meeting, city council meeting, and that was when we had a river flood. And it was like, I decided I didn't want to come back. So I tried to address issues by writing notes and so forth, so that a person took a chance to think about it and maybe, maybe respond, but this is something that happened that doesn't really amount to a lot of money, but I take it seriously. When I write a check to pay my utility bill, I do not expect that my check will be altered in any way, shape, or form. And any alterations I make, I always make an initial and circle it. And I pulled up a copy of the check from my bank in Sultan. I have a copy in my checkbook and of course, my statement. My check was altered, not by a heck of a lot, but it's not my writing and it's obvious that I picked up a copy of it. I don't want that to stop. That's fraud.
Give us that because.
It's fraud. You cannot change the amount of a check. And I put my name and number.
Did you?
I put my name and number on there for you to give me a call by the increase. And nobody bothered to call me back and they changed my check. Here's the original.
Forty-nine eleven, forty-nine, forty-one. Well, here's the original deal.
Yep. And here it is on my bank statement. It went through as forty-nine, forty-one, which was the, which was the relative amount. It doesn't amount to a heck of a lot, but I don't want it to stop.
Okay, well, we will check this out.
I had included a note that said, why the thirty cent change? And nobody bothered to call me back and they changed my check.
Do you send it out to you?
I just sent it in with my.
We're going to what?
I had a dispute in, no, it was in April.
In April, yes. Okay, well, we will check this out and see.
With my statement, but I can't.
Yeah, I know, this check with the statement agreed, okay.
And this, this is the amount I wrote for, and I said, why did thirty cent increase? And nobody called me back.
I will, I'll, I have your email address. I'll check and get back with you.
I'm sorry, I'm a real stickler for details. It's just.
I understand, I understand.
And I don't think anybody would appreciate having their checks changed and it's fraud.
Can we go, can we go and find a copy of this?
I went down to the bank and they said the same thing. Nobody has a right to change your check.
That's right, I understand.
So I have a question for the two of you. Isn't this best handled by filing a complaint with Officer Casey?
Well, I didn't want to go that far. I didn't know, you know, I've never been to any meetings, I didn't know you had a decent area or whatever.
Right, right. So I'm not, you're not required to, I mean, it's your choice.
I know, you told me at the bank I could do that, but I just want it to stop. I don't care about filing for.
But there is, there is this image that the council has to take care of as well, and so.
Yeah, well, the girl in the bank.
I'll let the mayor handle it, but he's, I just want him to be aware of my position on it. And you don't have to file a complaint, that's not, that's your, your fault.
We'll take care of it tomorrow. So.
Do you want to keep my copies for?
If you don't mind.
No, you should just make a copy.
Then.
You can obviously see that.
I can see that it's four, no longer, I mean, it's forty-one. I can see that, yes. Yes, well, until tomorrow. Okay.
So why the thirty cent increase?
I never did one of that.
Do we know?
The only time we had a thirty cent increase is when the recycling was having an increase. But that was reflecting on the bill. It was in April.
Yeah, go make a copy of this. Just this one? Just that one. Or we can keep this or do you want this back?
No, that's my copy from the bank.
No, go make a copy. Okay, thank you, John.
Somebody did.
Okay.
And if it had been me, I would have initially, because I initially wanted to.
Okay. We'll check this in. All right, well, any more comments? Okay, thank you. So we'll go into the next one, the old business, and Bob Strong is up on the FEMA issue.
Thank you. I took a look at the numerous pages and documentations and was, to answer the first question, I really don't think we need to use a lawyer here. I think there's been enough information where we can do, do jillages. But, and I was here when the presentation was made by the FEMA National Marine Fisheries Service. And he said that there's door one and door two and door three, which one do you want to go through to meet regulations? And for those that don't know, this is Wildlife Federation sued FEMA because in flood zones, they only worried about the structures and not the habitat. So now they're, they said, if you don't worry about the habitat, then you're messing it up. Lawsuit came and we talked about that. And so the National Marine Fisheries Service came up with what I would call a biological option, I think they call it a bio-op or bio. And the three doors, you can go, so you're going to adopt a model ordinance that they suggested, that was one, door one. Door two was the.
And it could have been me, I would have initially, because I initially didn't.
Okay. We'll check this in. All right, well, any more comments? Okay, thank you, so we're going to the next one, the old business, and Bob Strong is up on the FEMA issue.
Thank you. I took a look at the numerous pages. And documentations, and was, uh, to answer the first question, I really don't think we need to use a lawyer here. I think there's been enough information where we can do, uh, do gill, do gillages. But, and I was here when the presentation was made by the FEMA, uh, National Marine Fisheries Service. And he said that there's door one, and door two, and door three, which one do you wanna go through to meet regulations? And for those that don't know, this is Wildlife Federation sued FEMA, because in flood zones, they only worried about the structures and not the habitat. So now they're, and they said, if you don't worry about the habitat, then you're messing it up. Lawsuit came and we talked about that. And so, the National Marine Fisheries Service came up with, uh, what's called a biological option, I think they call it, a bio-op, or bio-op. And the three doors, you can go, so you're gonna adopt a model of ordinance that they suggested, that was one, door one. Door two was just made a checklist, they have all the compliance, you've done this, and done that, and everything is fine. And then the third door was conduct by permit by permit and review for development in the floodplain. And this requires documentation and et cetera, you know, nothing goes on without documentation. And so Joe, with contact with John Graves?
Yes.
And, and he's, he's at FEMA, I don't know, what's DHS?
Department of Services.
Department of Health and Services.
Could be, I don't know, I don't know, I'm land security?
No, there it is, must be homeland security.
D O C S.
Yeah. And, and he said, he went through this, reviewed the stuff that he was saying. And I was, you know, and I remember the stuff you showed last week on the pictures and stuff like that. You got once, remove a couple of sheds and put it in a garage, right? And all out of our hundred-foot, you know, meets our department.
Yes.
And so they give the list, this is their list of concerns, and theirs is, but, removal of education, bank armoring. And you're saying you can't force them in on the bank. And you can't straighten the channel, and you have, can't isolate the habitat, must have free floor, et cetera. Reduce flood storage capacity. And I'm not exactly sure what that means, because these mean if you filled in something, you reduce the flood storage capacity, but... To quote him later on, it just didn't make sense with that one. Anyway, degraded water quality and construction effects, noise and turbidity. Okay, and based on the limited information, he would say the proposal would consist at least of removal of vegetation, therefore reduce flood capacity storage. Or reduce, and reduce flood storage capacity, and there might be some effects to water quality, yeah? Well, I think that if, if, to get this actually doing, I think we need to put in with our building, I think we should prove it and say, okay, tell me how you're going to moderate... You know, how you're going to moderate the removal of vegetation, suggest they put up, putting the... This is just my opinion, and then as far as the, because I had a little struggle with that, because they're talking about moving the vegetation between these sheds or something.
Okay, the, the later, there was a later email from John Graves that I thought I gave you, that I pointed out afterwards, that where he was doing this was out of the floodplain.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, oh, well, never mind, almost. I mean, he, he, we did have to do a habitat analysis.
Right, right.
So there is some minimal stuff that we have to do. The kicker is, the lawsuit talks about two hundred fifty foot upset, as opposed to our hundred. And I know the county went through the routine about reducing to a hundred fifty, is that right on that?
Yeah, I saw, I saw their presentation and their checklist and stuff like that. I was first going to suggest, oh, go along to the county checklist, and I saw their checklist and decided nah, I don't want to do that, and it's pages. Now, I don't, you know, the guy trying to do it, I didn't, I say, let's approve the building for it, but you know, you've got to have a copy that protects the city, saying that there may be a two hundred fifty foot rule come in, and you don't have to take the rock back out of it. Is that right?
I doubt that would happen.
I doubt, well, I do too, we're awful small on the radar screen here.
I thought that by understanding, because we had this discussion last on him, the penalty for disobeying that rule was not to remove the structure, but that you would not be eligible to purchase federal flood insurance.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, yes, I saw that, yes.
It wasn't a legal issue, it was an insurance issue.
And it's a question, I believe that you cannot get federal flood insurance anywhere in the city, if the city lets that be a violation. Okay, not just that one law.
Yeah, that's actually a lottery too, I forgot, thank you very much for bringing that up.
So...
It has a little bit larger impact, you know.
Now, the one thing we haven't checked out, I did a little bit, I did one, got one answer, and Lynn Miller did another guy a different answer, is whether or not, if you buy flooding, flood insurance, that's not federally subsidized, what does it cost? And if you're out of the floodplain, it doesn't matter anyway, because it all costs the same. So the only people that would be affected is those who may have buildings in the floodplain. That would not qualify for federal flood insurance, but would still purchase commercial flood insurance, probably at a higher price.
You know, that doesn't seem to be a reasonably complete explanation to me, because... And you would not be denying anyone a building permit, no matter how close to the creek they are.
No, we have a hundred foot setback, city rule.
Well, okay.
Yeah, you need the city rules.
And no floodplain buildings.
And then the other, the other part of that, though, is the fisheries, National Fisheries, whatever that is.
National Marine Fisheries Service.
Right, okay, National Marine Fisheries Service. They have a part in this as well. So somehow in my mind, we're missing the piece. I might be wrong, but it just seems like they, their concern would be habitat, not flood insurance.
And in this particular case, John Graves said no habitat analysis required, so...
And, and, and what happens, the National Marine Fisheries got called in by FEMA. And I think as a result of the lawsuit, I don't know if you have to put on that, but, and because the whole lawsuit says that you have all this stuff about buildings in a floodplain and whatnot, but you don't care about habitat, so that's why the National Marine Fisheries Service came in, to apply the biological input.
And, and just pretty much, if you try to build in the floodplain, the answer is pretty much effectively no, unless, you know, your bill gates got enough money to run through development, for what the impact analysis has to be. But if you're not in the floodplain, well, you know, some of you are a whole different thing. It's not the floodplain, not floodplain, it's the, the offset. And what the county's doing, they say, ours is a hundred fifty feet, is that five hundred fifty feet you're going? And call back in four years and see how it works out. And so that's what Bob is saying, that that's reasonable for us, because all the places already built a hundred-foot offset setback coming. And in that particular place, it's a beautiful backyard, and there's going to be no disruption of that, which is the objective, so...
So we're not bypassing any other requirement by approving this?
That's correct. No, no other city requirements. And it's not the floodplains, so minimal requirements.
John, what about, we're doing the Charlotte Master Plan, and does it prohibit building in the floodplain?
No.
Okay.
In the floodway.
In the floodway, the number floodplain, okay.
I'm sure that's how the first draft's going to come out.
Yeah, and don't they, so let's say if you do damage someplace, you have to do it, you have to do a balancing act to improve it someplace, so it's just not their strategy, you know, that one.
Well, there will be no net loss.
No, not loss, no.
No loss, no. In the floodplain.
Yes.
But, once you touch the floodplain, now you've got to go through all the fair old ones. Mm-hmm. That's not something I think we should try to cut around. But outside of the floodplain, you can do it.
Yeah. I don't see how it's possibly going to hurt the habitat of Med Creek. I personally gone to that site and looked at it. Come on, you know, it was...
Oh, no, this, and again, the thing was, you know, what really gets me every day sometimes, is it was made for development, and they're envisioning these guys can go with backhoes and stuff like this. And, and probably if you're coming in with backhoes and stuff, two hundred fifty feet, it may not be all that bad a deal. But for existing properties and already fully landscaped and finished and everything, you put a prod on, now it's... Probably have to do with, with them to make one rule. Okay, is that about it? All right, so...
So I would make a motion to approve the building.
Well, he has, he has involved the property.
Well, he has it, okay.
He was obviously not wanting to buy it and then get nailed on it, so... Is this site-specific you're talking about, or is this city-wide?
Site-specific is how I'm talking about it. In particular, in door one, two, and three, what I see is Snohomish County, and Joe's better at it than I am, but I see they're, they're doing the division three, here, door three, here's our list of stuff. But they're also going back and saying, here's your criteria intermediate. So it's not, I don't know.
Door three is a case-by-case study.
Yeah, thank you, it's case-by-case.
Yeah.
As versus just the general set of rules.
Yeah.
Because that's door two is a general set of rules, I think.
So I understood John's question, I mean, I think I did, but in that, because it's basically the same question I have, is this a, would we, would we apply this across the city, or... I know we're talking about a specific case, but, but do those same rules then apply elsewhere?
I don't know, we'll have to think about that. That may be something we want to fold in to the Charlotte Master Plan, to, to meet that with these conditions. But we'll have to work on that. Answer is, right now, we just got directions from the council, and we'll continue to work on that.
Right now, I think we're talking about a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, for all of this stuff.
Any policy just yet?
Anything, anything within the extended area is on a case-by-case, because that's what we sent to FEMA, we said, we're doing door three.
Okay.
And we'll look at it case-by-case basis.
All right. Well, let's go next to the three resolution that we talked about last week. Okay, this is what we talked about last week. The real estate excise tax funds are restricted to capital projects that are in your city comprehensive plan. And we have used it in the past for some of the park work we were doing, with the round of park impact fund, the park impact funds, and I'm not sure what else we've used it for. It's been highly restrictive, but it has to be on a capital project. And for example, you could buy parkland with refunds, which you could not maintain or improve the parkland with refunds. So every time, you know, a lot of cities spend this money, and then having a piece of parkland that they didn't have the money to do anything with. And so, there's been legislative attempts to get some relaxation on this, and the legislature gave a one-year relaxation, so that you can use it for operations and basic expenditures on things that are in the comprehensive plan. And so, one and two probably could have been, maybe could be handled under REIT without the resolution, without the, the one-year exemption, but they're sort of on the corner. Because as part of surveillance cameras and part of the land posts that we purchased under a park impact with use of refunds to fill in. We've got a plumbing system that's qualified, like we discussed, and it's maintenance of the facility, so that fits in. And then there's various other things that, that we need, like the front driveshaft for the tractor mower, and things that we use over and over, which qualify. Now, John, what's an asphalt compactor, can you explain that right fast?
For the whacker?
Yeah.
Because ours still are at work.
Yeah, for compact asphalt, we have one in Graves. Okay, so when you do a cold patch, you whack it, you call it, okay? Because that's the base. Yeah, sure, okay. Well, you know, sometimes...
Well, cold patch is meant to be a temporary.
Yes, not only that, the ground under it needs to be packed down before you even put that down, so it doesn't settle later.
Yeah.
We have no way of doing it.
So, so you've got no compactor at all?
We jump up and down, our, we are...
But you're cheap for the fourth hour of the shot of the ball.
First L I, twice you're wrong.
Right, well, okay. So again, but this fits in, it's under operation and maintenance. So, and we talked about last time, and anything, again, over five hundred bucks, we'll bring to the council for approval before we actually do it, and...
I have a question.
Yes.
I see this four thousand five hundred dollars for an asphalt compactor.
Yeah.
Why would the city go out and spend four thousand five hundred dollars on an asphalt compactor, and you can go to Harbor Freight and get them for about four hundred bucks?
That's what I was just going to say.
Because we buy a lot of stuff from Harbor Freight that's not approved by L N.
Well, so it's got to be UL listed, and if that's not UL listed, you can't purchase it.
So you're saying that if it's not approved, totally approved by L N, or it doesn't have a certain listing on it, and you can buy at a cheaper price somewhere else?
That's correct. Yeah. In fact, we have some equipment over in the shop that we'd like to utilize, and we can't utilize it.
But there's got to be another place to get an asphalt compactor that L N, that L N approved for less than four thousand five hundred dollars.
Well, this is... You can probably buy an asphalt compactor for seven hundred dollars, and that's what you're going to get.
Not necessarily.
What, what, yeah, yeah, wait a second, Richard White did some background work, we're going to go back and check this again. This is just a resolution, we're going to access the fund for that. We're not treating this as an approval, so the thing, I may want to motion to go ahead and do the driveshaft for the tractor mower. And these are round numbered estimates. But yeah, you go out and buy a seven hundred dollar tool, or a four thousand dollar tool, it's, you can get a lot of different tools. We save money on tools before, and equipment before, that's like the dust.
Well, I'm just saying, I went and bought a huge, huge, look at all those things, when electricity goes out generating.
Mm-hmm.
And we looked all over the place, and then ten thousand, twenty thousand, fifteen thousand, twelve thousand, found one for eight hundred and fifty dollars, and the thing's never broken, never broken. And it's the same amount of wattage, or whatever it is, that's all of these other ones. You just have to hope.
Well, okay.
Takes time, a lot of labor.
You want to do independent research on asphalt compactor?
Yeah, I'll do independent asphalt compactor research. I have no problem with that.
I got this out of just one of our books, is all, to just give a number, is all. It was in the separate, so it was just...
So that's what you're doing, is just throwing a number?
I just, yeah, that's all this is about, you know. Does, does the city actually have...
What you can improve is to do this, and then he does the final work.
I'll do some research, maybe I can find something that's a little different and raising the...
You got to be heavy in any commercial, you know, it's not a home hobby.
No, no.
Okay, good, no problem.
I'll get the chip.
And I have one question also, so the wire feed welder, is anybody certified to run a welder? Don't you have to be a certified welder in order to run a wire, a wire feed welder?
Well, you do use gas when you're welding.
That's, that's my thing.
I have a wire feed at home, it's electric.
Yes, and that uses a different type of welding rod, or a different spool, it's called gasless, and it has the gas actually carbonized on the cable. But most wire feed welders, especially one that you're going to spend a thousand dollars for, run argon, or a specific type of gas.
Yeah.
But, to the best of my knowledge, you don't have to be certified to weld anything, unless it's... I guess it would be a safety concern.
Well, I, I'm asking because I'm curious of the state might require us...
Jay?
Employees, no?
I do have a lot. It's probably if you're going to be a business, I'll run around doing the commercial work all of the time. And the wire feed, the wire fed well, then they'll prepare to stick welder, but I can't do that. You can't help saying it's quite that out there, rather than paying somebody to do it. You just have to have a really steady hand, and you don't need a wire feed. I mean, wire feed, stick welders, since they're sixteen and so...
All right, so I'd like to motion to approve, I wanted to discuss that last line item before we move on. Okay.
And the reason I want to discuss this is because I keep hearing from my fellow citizens about how we handle things in the military, how we handle them at Boeing, and within the unions as far as boots, clothing, eye protection. Typically, they're given this, the first issue, and then all subsequent issues fall upon the individual to pay for. So that's what I want to ask is, are, are, are we, is this a continuous one, or have they already been issued some of these?
I think this is someone that, what goes back some time ago, a previous city council approved, either by motion or something, that we would provide all safety clothing, or clothing allowance, John, do you, do you remember the details of that? Clothing allowance. Clothing allowance for this sort of stuff. And the subsequent councils did not like that, and so we were going to provide a base set of safety equipment. And has anyone used clothing allowance in the last year, two years? Yeah, we get the safety vests and that sort of stuff. I mean, okay, so... Is what?
They have jackets, they just recently got jackets.
I had my jacket for several years.
Well, no, we, somebody bought jackets.
It's been several years.
I got one jacket, that was my first one in ten years.
But, I know, most, I won't say most, I'll say a lot of municipalities, they get thirty M so much a year, then you're responsible to buy your own stuff, not safety stuff. Some cities, they've had this problem, or this discussion, so they've done away with it, so they contract with somebody to come out and give coveralls. And every month, the coverall guy comes out, your coveralls are in a bucket, they pick it up, replace the coveralls. You know, it's, it's nothing that's unusual one bit, it's not the military, it's the city.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, if it's keeping them safe out there, it's cheaper than a plane.
Yeah.
And, you know, the eye protection, the boots.
And just the regular companies I've worked for, they provided steel-toed boots. I mean, Precor and Woodinville, they provided steel-toed boots, up to a certain level, they would pay for. Same Merrill, they're in, Woodin, Irving Monroe, also paid for steel-toed boots. A lot of places where I worked, they would allow a certain amount of, they would pay for a certain amount of steel-toed boots, because that was a requirement.
Same with the other work also. And they did an annual allowance to it.
Yeah.
You're given so much, now if you need another pair of boots, that was on your own, if you...
Yeah.
But a certain minimum was applied.
What we're facing here is, we don't have a solid policy on this, and we have something that a council did some number of years ago. And, so we're going to need a policy of sorts on the safety equipment.
Why wouldn't we implement this into the employee handbook or the policy book?
Yes, that would be an excellent place to do that. And... So anyway, okay, now...
Now, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I've heard Richard say that the forty-five hundred dollars for the asphalt compactor was just a first shot at it.
Yeah, I get it.
So, shouldn't we say somewhere in here that this is just an estimate?
Yes, we're ready to modify the resolution as the council specifies. Aha, I mean, that's your job, I just, I just, I'm the administrative assistant for you.
Appreciate that, John.
So, let's find it. Okay. Why don't, why doesn't someone make a comment about how you would like to modify the resolution?
Well, how about, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twelve dash zero four, for use of real estate, real estate excise tax funds. Per modification by the council, right? Because we're going to rewrite this, and we'll see it again, correct?
Uh, already depends how complex the changes are, yes.
Like, to include the word estimate, or approximate value.
It states already approximate.
Approximately.
Does it?
Yeah.
Line four says approximately nine thousand dollars. Yes, four thousand dollars. And so does three.
Okay, good. I have a trouble with that.
Couldn't we put a limitation, like how much we want to spend? And something, couldn't we say, we don't want to spend more than X amount of dollars, or something, or, I mean, couldn't, I mean, you don't want to go say, this is going to be nine thousand dollars, and then all of a sudden it turns out to be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't we do this, this is in the rules anyway, this is not clear in this resolution. Why we add, I define, all purchases over five hundred dollars will be approved by the city council before being purchased, all items over five hundred.
Sounds like a good idea to me, I'm not for saying no.
Well, that's a rule anyway.
That's a rule anyway, it's implied, but it's not obvious.
Right.
So we'll put this on here, basically, I'd like to... Safety, all right, you guys?
Perfect.